All right, well, we will call the Center County Board of Commissioners meeting to order at 10 o'clock. All those who are able, please stand for the flag.
My flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment for items that are not appearing on today's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to additions to the agenda. Commissioner Concepcion, Commissioner Dershowitz.
That I'm aware.
All right, very busy day today, so that's good. We'll move on to our meeting minutes. No changes to the meeting minutes? No? All right, motion then.
I will move to approve the minutes from the meeting held April 18th, 2023.
Second. We have a motion of second to approve the meeting minutes from April 28th. All those in favor do so by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, we'll move into proclamations. We have two of them today. The first one is proclamation number 16 proclaiming April 28th as Workers Memorial Day in Center County. I believe we're joined by Connor Lewis for that one. If you'd come to the podium and state your municipality and then, you know, go right into your presentation. Sure.
Like Commissioner Higgins mentioned, I'm Connor Lewis. I am president of Seven Mountains AFL-CIO. I'm a resident of State College Borough and I'm here representing the approximately 16,000 members of union households in our Labor Council as well as approximately 7,000 members of union households within Center County. Workers Memorial Day is observed every year on April 28th, the anniversary of the passage of the Occupational Safety and Health Act, and it's observed in memorial of those who have lost their lives or lost their health on the job. Unfortunately, over the past several years, we've had far too many individuals that we have to remember, ranging from skilled tradespeople to bus drivers to education support staff and of course, the dedicated care workers at Mountain Inn Healthcare who have worked through the past several years to keep our community safe and are proud members of SEIU Healthcare PA, one of our affiliate unions. The motto of Workers Memorial Day is taken from Mary Harris, who is an Irish immigrant better known as Mother Jones and a leader of the American labor movement and was a person who has never, never known to back down from, from a fight if it meant advocating for working people. And one of the things that she said was that we should mourn for the dead and fight for the living. And that's what we as labor movement and we as working people do every single year on April 28th. We take that time to remember those we have lost and recommit to fighting for workplace safety and dignified work for all workers. And so this is the intent of Workers Memorial Day. It's celebrated not, or observed not just by workers in the United States but in over 100 different countries. And I want to thank the commissioners for considering this proclamation and considering making it an official observation within Center County.
Thanks Connor, appreciate that. I know here in Center County, we're very concerned about our employees. We have a safety committee, we have a risk management coordinator and manager, and I would urge public and private sector employers to ensure that if your staff is covered under the OSHA requirements for the OSHA 10 training, to please make sure that your employees do get their 10 hours of safety training in. Sometimes when I'm in the internet, I will see workplace videos that are kind of on the horrific side, although they are also sort of funny. So please, please, please be safe in the workplace, urge your employees to be safe. And we do want to remember all of those who have passed away over the last couple of years during the course of just simply doing their jobs. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thanks for being here. I think it's a good time to pause and remember that OSHA regulations are not there to be burdensome, it's to potentially save people's lives. So, thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
No, just thank you for coming in and reminding everyone the importance of workplace safety. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much Connor, appreciate that. If you'd like to come up, we present the proclamations and take a picture and eventually ends up on the county Facebook page.
Better vote on it first.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Oh, I'm trying to move the meeting along a little too quickly. Thanks Steve. All right, so can we have a motion to approve the proclamation 16 of 2023 proclaiming April 28th as Workers Memorial Day in Center County?
I will move that we adopt proclamation 16 of 2023 proclaiming April 28th, 2023, Workers Memorial Day in Center County.
I will second that. Great, we have a motion of second. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right, now.
Hey, there we go.
Now. Thanks for coming in. Hi Scott. Move a little closer to the center here, so that you're, move a little closer to me so you're centered on the map. There we are. Got it, thanks. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to hand you a copy of the picture. All right. Great. All right, now, we move to proclamation number 17, getting this one a little bit in advance, but it's, it's pretty busy right now with the proclamations. We will proclaim May 14th as Mental Wellness Day, oh, and May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Center County. We have Kathy Arbogast here, oh, and we do have Marissa Vissera as well. Come on up.
Hello, thank you so much for once again considering this proclamation for May. As you know, mental health awareness is extremely important to all of us within Center County. We continue to see growing needs in our county for individuals of all ages, and so this month is really designed to continue to raise awareness that we are all on a spectrum for our mental health and it's something that really needs to be focused on each and every day so that we can continue to grow and thrive as a community. It also provides opportunities for us to learn about those different warning signs and symptoms and ways that we can support one another in our community. And so throughout the month of May, there'll be a lot of different opportunities that individuals can get to, to learn about the different signs and symptoms out there. And so I do have a calendar of events, but on Saturday, May 13th, we will be once again offering Jam Fest in Downtown State College. It's such a great event where not only Jana Marie Foundation will be out, but many of our agencies and organizations that are related to mental health come out for a day of celebration. We offer wellness activities, there'll be live music, there'll be stations, interactive stations where you get to make things and really focus on general well-being throughout the day. It goes from 12 to 5 and will be on Frazier Street and the Martin Luther King Jr. Plaza there. We also are offering four free trainings for QPR or Question Persuade Refer Suicide Prevention Training. It's a great way to learn how to help somebody who might be experiencing a crisis, and so all of those dates are available on Jana Marie Foundation's website. And then we'll be also offering a youth mental health first aid course. This is a little bit of a longer course, so it's about, about seven hours of education for adults who are learning to assist young people. And it really recognizes what is typical adolescent development and then when it might be something more and provides a tangible five-step action plan to be able to help the young people in our community. So we really encourage everybody to come out for that. It's on Tuesday, May 16th, from 9 to 4 at Jana Marie Foundation's office, and because of the general support of the community, we are able to offer this at no cost as well. We also will be doing art with a theme again in Downtown State College, so our wolves are the theme this year. So we have all different wolves that are painted by community members that will be hanging up in downtown businesses in State College. So definitely come out and see those as well. But one of the things that we really love about Center County is how so many different organizations and agencies really work together. There's a lot of different collaborations that happen behind the scenes from the typical people you would experience, you would expect to have at the table, but then so many other organizations that really get behind these initiatives as well. And I think that's one of the things that really helps set Center County apart from so many others. So thank you very much for once again considering to proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you, Marissa. In addition to all of the wonderful activities that the Jana Marie Foundation will be hosting, the 17th Annual Celebration of Mental Health Recovery will be happening on Thursday, May 18th at 4:30 PM. The Opportunity Center Clubhouse and Center Mobile Psych Rehab Peer Services will be hosting this event. The theme this year is "This Is Us," and that event will be held at the barn at Millbrook Marsh Nature Center. The public is welcome to join us and it's an opportunity to, to recognize those that we've lost, those that we celebrate, and as the theme, the theme says it all, this is us. And so we welcome everyone to join us on the 18th. For more information, folks can contact the clubhouse at 814-867-1454. So March is indeed, I'm sorry, not March, May. I'm a little behind. May is certainly an opportunity for us to recognize and raise our awareness around mental health issues, but year-round, we need to focus on the incredible importance of good mental health care and encourage folks, if you are in need, to reach out and get the help that you need. So, thank you.
Thanks, I want to check real quick with Marissa. The Jam Fest, is that free?
It is free.
Yes, I'm sure you're accepting donations, but it's free?
Yes, absolutely. We have five bands lined up and we'll have at least 14 engagement stations. There's kazoo making, there's beaded wind chime making, there's so many fun activities to get involved with, really family-friendly, it's available for all ages, so we really encourage you to come out and hopefully we'll have some nice weather again this year.
So again, that's May 13th?
Yep.
From what times?
From 12 to 5.
Okay, great, great, thanks. And, you know, thanks to Kathy for all her departments do, but of course, the Jana Marie Foundation and all of the other stakeholders we work with in mental health are working hard every day and usually for not the highest pay, so we appreciate that. Commissioner Concepcion.
Thank you so much for being here. I think since we have the media here, I just want to take the opportunity to note that for the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, increased state funding for mental health is one of our key legislative priorities that we're asking of our state legislature. And I know there's some consideration in this year's budget for that, and I know having talked with Senator Langerhulk and a number of others, that they, they also see the, the importance of this as a, as a priority for the wellness of people throughout our, this Commonwealth. But I will say, you know, with the fact that we have not had those kind of increases in mental health funding over the past dozen years that probably have been needed, organizations like Jana Marie Foundation have really stepped into the gap and we've seen how much of a priority this is in our community and how there's community members who are willing to give of their time and money and effort to do what we can to help support everyone in our community. So, thank you for being here. Your organization does amazing work.
Thank you.
I think I would, I would be remiss if I didn't gush on you a little bit. Your modesty doesn't allow you to say it, but I think we can. Marissa is being honored this weekend nationally for her efforts in the mental health first aid, and she's receiving like much, much, much credited award for your efforts here in Center County and beyond, and if you could just take a moment and maybe indulge us on, on your celebration.
Well, thank you. So once again, we, Jana Marie Foundation and me specifically is a top instructor in Pennsylvania for our efforts with mental health first aid. That is an evidence-based training. It's owned by the National Council for Mental Wellbeing, and then this year I'm being recognized as the Youth Mental Health First Aid Instructor of the Year. So I'll be going out to Los Angeles to receive that award on Sunday, so, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just couldn't let that one go, Ma.
Yeah, I'd also like to note, Marissa is one of our outstanding alumni inductees this year for State College Area School District. She's being recognized in May at our annual banquet as one of our outstanding alumni this year for the, what we call the Maroon and Gray Society. So, in recognition of all the work she's done in our community.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, all right, we have a motion then.
I'll move to adopt proclamation 17 of 2023 proclaiming May 14th, 2023, as Mental Wellness Day and May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Center County.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. And Marissa, can you bring the, I think it's the little wolves, bring the wolves up?
We just had to brush over you a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And hold that high enough.
I would be a wolf in cheap clothing.
Which is the better wolf?
I think this is the, yeah, that is a more colorful wolf.
All right, and then, should we give the press in the back a second?
Oh.
Without Aaron in the middle? There we go. All right, you got it?
Got it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here. Absolutely.
Safe travels, as we get.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so we'll move on to our resolutions. Our resolution number six of 2023 is a little out of the ordinary. I'll hand it over to John.
Good morning Commissioners. Before you, resolution six is a resolution amending the terms of the right-of-way agreement declaration pertaining to the Center County Correctional Facility property. The resolution also resolves that the commissioners are authorized to execute the amendment to right-of-way declaration once the Center County Industrial Development Corporation acquires title to adjoining Lot 2. So there is a right-of-way on the correctional facility property that was intended to provide access to an adjoining Lot 2. Right now, that agreement requires the county to build out the infrastructure for that access, and this resolution is removing that obligation from the county. There is a contingency though, that the property first must transfer to the new owner, which would be the Development Corporation. So, once that occurs, and we're expecting that to occur on Thursday, that is when you would be able to sign the amended agreement. But for today, we are seeking approval of the resolution that would allow these couple activities to occur.
And we do appreciate the Development Corporation working with us on this issue. Commissioner Concepcion, anything?
Thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
No, I, I think it, it certainly relieves us of, of a lot of responsibility that initially, when the land was transferred from the jail, it gives us the opportunity to, to say, you know, it's off our back now and off our plate, and we wish the, the new owners the best, but you know, it's just good that we do not any longer have the, which would have been incredibly expensive for us to endeavor, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, we are seeing a lot of growth along Benner Pike and Greater Belfond in general. Unless there's any other questions, we'll move on to a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution six of 2023.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number six of 2023. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, now we move on to bids and proposals. I think we've got Liz and possibly Ray on something very exciting, the Center County broadband expansion.
Yes, actually I have two items back to back.
Yes.
Considerations, okay?
Yo, come right on up.
Yeah, so this morning, to put this in context, the proposal that I'm asking the commissioners to consider this morning is kind of that next foundational step in taking the broadband strategic plan and moving it towards implementation. So what I'm asking of you today is your consideration to release and advertise a request for, of proposals from internet companies. And this process is a typical of what the county does. Typically, when the county puts out a request for proposals or invitation or bid, they are looking for improvements to like a, a facility of, of their sorts that they would own, operate and manage. In this case, we're asking internet providers to come forward with a rural world broadband expansion project of the facilities and infrastructure that they would own, operate and manage through a project that the county could possibly support. So we are going to be opening that opportunity today with putting the RFP out online and then determining as those proposals come through, what we could reasonably support and in what form, what shape that would take place. So with that being said, I don't know if you have additional questions before moving that to consideration.
Well, I, I think it's a great idea and planning and especially yourself has done some fabulous work on that. I want to compliment you because the guidelines came out less than two weeks ago, and now we are all ready to engage with the ISPs and work on grant proposals to try to boil something down very quickly for the folks at home. We'd like to thank the state legislature for making $200 million of American Rescue Plan funds available to bring more rural broadband to Pennsylvania, and that funding will go through the Pennsylvania Broadband Authority, and we have, I think it's until roughly the 10th of July to turn in our grant requests.
Yeah, yeah.
And there will be about a 25% local match requirement, which will be additional conversations between the internet service providers, the county, the municipalities and potentially the school districts. So it's very complicated, we've got to get all this done by the 10th of July, but you are getting us ready so quickly, Liz, I think will be very helpful.
Yeah, and CTC, you know, part of their contract with the, with the plan itself was to develop this RFP for us, to help us get positioned to be at this point. As you point out, there are going to be room for negotiations. A huge part of this application process though, comes in the form of public engagement, and I think that is a really crucial part that providers can consider what we can at the planning level contribute to, you know, what that's going to look like, be it town hall meetings, marketing, a potential project, asking for letters of support. That's going to be a huge component that the municipalities can bring to the table. And we're also kind of mindful that there's going to be, once these applications go to the authority, they're undergo a review process, there could be some challenges and some rescoping of these projects, so, you know, we want to be able to be flexible in what resources we can provide reasonably and be patient as, you know, as, as our providers, you know, go through that process.
Great, thanks Liz. Commissioner Concepcion, any additional comments?
Yeah, so just first, I'd like to compliment our staff on how quickly you've worked to, to get ready to put this RFP out with how swiftly things have come to our attention in terms of these guidelines coming out kind of suddenly on short with not a long lead time to get ready, but the background work that you all have done with the broadband study over the past year has really laid the groundwork. And really, when I have talked to people around the county, rural broadband needs have been something critical that, that I think pretty much every citizen who lives in an underserved area or knows folks who do, understand how important this is to economic development and for education. So, thanks, we just want to keep it moving, so.
Thanks Amber. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Thank you for going from a plan on a shelf to actually a project that's going to put internet into people's homes. That's, that's really, I think, what the crux of this is, and I know you've put a ton of hours in, and your whole department has, has been all hands on deck to make this happen, and it has been already indicated, we have a short window of opportunity and we need to make the best of it, and without your guidance and leadership, that probably would not be possible, so thank you.
Well, well, thank you, there's been a lot of moving parts and we're doing our best to keep on top of all the changes as they come down the line, so.
I know this has been a special interest of Gary's. Are there any questions from the press?
So the RFP you should put out, is it a county-wide service you're looking for or do you say we're, you want to target certain areas of town?
Well, that's an excellent question. We are really looking back from the broadband plan for providers to target those priority areas, those geographies that were identified. Now, how this is actually going to play out, we've had, it was from the start, we had nine providers engage with us during the study. Five or six have been very active, they have expressed interest in partnering with the county, so it is very feasible that we could receive five, six or seven different proposals that we could all, you know, collectively look at and consider. From that point, then the ISP would submit that application to the authority, you know, given that the county can, you know, support that, and then once they get to the authority, again, I don't want to use the adage that it's out of our hands, but it's up to them to make that determination if it is a really good proposal that can be advanced. In all honesty, we could be looking at three separate projects in Center County that could all move forward at once, and, and that's, I think that would be great. It's going to be a lot to, to manage, but the county as a partner wouldn't have that heavy lift in that application process, but we would still certainly play a role to help get that project off the ground.
Get the project off the ground and help provide some of the local match money.
Yes.
We appreciate Congressman Thompson's efforts, probably we'll be coming to your door and asking for help, so, it's all part of the conversation as well, the state legislators, so I think we're all going to be pulling on, on all the, all the ropes to make sure this happens. We've got about 9,000 homes in Center County that desperately need internet service, so.
So, great question Gary, any other questions from Gary?
Public support, are you looking for different forms besides people showing up and saying, we'll pick about like in Center County, so and so, I don't have privacy, I might have privacy, or what are the forms of public support that you're looking for?
Public support, I think it can come in a lot of different forms. One is just simply giving residents an idea, kind of that, that heads up that this project may happen in their neighborhood, so they're just fully aware of that, so they would understand what the technology is that is coming, how they could utilize that. Get an idea of what are their affordable measures, you know, communicate that back to a provider. That simple like education piece. From the ISP's perspective, when they go into a neighborhood and they want to build something out, they need a customer base. So, if a resident fully understands what's coming and what would be available to them, if it's affordable, that could essentially in some respects, help those companies acquire the customer base that they would, they would need. That was, you know, part of, part of the point of, you know, the deployment, so.
And letters of support from municipalities, from school districts, from granges throughout the county, from small businesses. I think within reason, the more letters of support, the more weight the application will probably receive. Any additional questions from the press?
And just to clarify, these projects, are they going to be specifically targeting the areas that showed a great amount of need in that broadband survey that was conducted previously?
Yeah, exactly. So part of our RFP process, it's going to have to align with what the broadband authorities' guidelines are. So we had those three priority zones identified in the study that it, it makes most sense that those are the residents that are served and unserved. That's where the projects really need to happen first. We also are looking for an 80% threshold level, both at the state and in our RFP process that, you know, if a provider can come in, they need to serve 80% of the households in that project area that truly are served and underserved.
Great, a lot of questions from the press. Unless there's anything else, maybe we should move forward.
Unless there's anything else, maybe we should move forward with the motion, then.
So I will move to approve advertising the request for proposals for the Center County broadband expansion.
We'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the advertisement for proposals on the Center County broadband expansion. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. And then we go right back to Liz for a contract that's very much part of what we just discussed.
It is very much a part of it. So the contract proposal that I'm asking you to approve this morning is with CTC technology for some assistance in reviewing these requests for proposals as they come in. I just need a little bit of assistance in the event that something would technically come in, full of technical jargon that I might not be able to interpret, or in the event that we're fortunate enough to get multiple proposals to have a second set of eyes on these to ensure that the proposal that a company comes forward with is truly the best for the target areas that we've identified. So that being said, the agreement will be for $7,500 through the period of May 1st, 2023, to April 30th of 2024. The reasoning being, as we've seen at the state level, delays have happened. So I want to ensure that that end date, that there is an end date to begin with, but it's out far enough that we don't have to go through an additional amendment or contract update. So, being that, just help me with the proposals, so.
We appreciate the workload, Liz. You already have a full plate, and now you might have to review six, seven highly complicated proposals covering hundreds of homes each in Center County, totaling at least a half a million dollars each, which would require local grant matches of at least $125,000. This is a lot of work. And so in addition to CTC, tomorrow at SEDOCOG, where I'm president this year, we'll have some additional discussions about how much support SEDOCOG can lend. And then, thank goodness, we just signed that recent contract with a grant consulting firm, which, while they're not technical, they could hopefully at least help us with some of the negotiation portions. So we understand just how much work we're putting on your plate. Thank you, Liz. Commissioner Concepcion.
No, I think with the amount of potential funding coming from the state, it really behooves us to bring in the technical expertise to support you in this, so.
Commissioner Durson?
That sounds great. All right, well, let's have a motion.
I'll move to approve the professional services agreement with Columbia Telecommunications Corporation, the CTC Technology and Energy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the professional services agreement with CTC Technology and Energy do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thank you very much, Liz.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thanks again to Ray and the rest of the staff, who will be picking up maybe some of Liz's work. So now we will move over to Betsy Lockwood from SEDOCOG, who's joining us by Zoom for a revised application for an Appalachian Regional Commission grant for the Machanan Valley ambulance service.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Betsy Lockwood, and I'm Director of Project Development Grants for Cedar Council of Governments. And I'm here today to request the Center County Commissioners to consider approval of the revised application for the Appalachian Regional Commission. The application is for $300,000 to construct a new 9,350-square-foot Machanan Valley Emergency Services ambulance and training headquarters. That will enable Machanan Valley Emergency Services to meet the critical need for a training center in Center County to train new and incumbent workers for certified EMS technicians. The Department of Community and Economic Development had requested several revisions. Additionally, local share account grant funds recently came into play with this grant and required new federal forms and a new match letter to be signed for this application. Also, the Machanan Valley Emergency Services received training accreditation certificate, so we included that information recently into the application. So requesting the approval of the revised application to the ARC. I've been working closely with West Cartwright and Machanan Valley Emergency Services and Ray in the Planning Department, and if they have anything else to add, please feel free.
Great, well, thank you very much, Betsy. We appreciate your technical assistance on this because, from the sounds of it, we're matching one federal grant, two state grants, appreciate the support from the legislature and the congressman, and then with local financing as well. So a lot of moving parts on this one. But the commissioners are very supportive of our ambulance services here in Center County, and even though this one actually goes into Clearfield County, we're happy to help. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, now, thank you for your work on this. I've had an opportunity to interact with some of the folks involved with this organization. It's a really robust emergency management or emergency response organization. Glad to see this project moving forward. It's really important.
Great, Commissioner Durson?
I think we all know that the EMS services are struggling right now, and this is going to be a big shot in the arm, and it's going to be amazing for the Machanan Valley. So I hope this is successful, or even to see them get this money, so. Happy to support it.
Great, all right. And again, thanks, because a lot of this money is coming from the state and the federal government. So we do appreciate the congressman, the two U.S. senators, and the various state senators and state representatives in getting this, hopefully, across the finish line. Unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion, then.
I'll move to approve the revised application for the Appalachian Regional Commission for the ambulance and training headquarters for the Machanan Valley EMS, of which Center County is serving as the applicant.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the revised application to the Appalachian Regional Commission for an ambulance and training headquarters for the Machanan Valley EMS in Phillipsburg, with Center County serving as the applicant. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move over to planning, and this one, I think, to Ray's handling, an engagement letter for an R cap project. Actually, it looks like two R cap projects.
Oh, actually, it's just the one, the Titan Energy Park project. And this is a culmination of work that has been done by the subgrantee Navidus McCrossan, who's the contractor. And last week, we had a visit from Randy La Croix from the Office of Budget. He did an onsite audit on the 18th and 19th, and to say, we're very proud to say that there is no significant finding, as they reviewed all of our meeting minutes, finances that were done throughout the project. And now we come to the point where we'll need the engagement letter and management rep letter by the end of the meeting this morning. I'm sorry for the immediacy, but we will have an exit interview with Randy virtually at 11:30 this morning. So those are required to be submitted to finish the project. So we'll ask the commissioners to get those signed. But other than that, to sum up those two items, I think my narrative was a little lengthy, but with no significant finding, we're proud to say that the project is complete. Randy had a chance to take a look at the site, and unfortunately, it was 8:30 in the morning, so he wasn't able to sample Axeman. But he did appreciate the fact that that site has been repurposed very well, so.
Great, yeah, we appreciate your department's work on this. These are highly complicated. Again, thanks to the state legislature for the funding of the R caps, but it's on a tremendous amount of forms. And for the public, this is basically the Titan Metal Project with Axeman Brewery, with Titan Hollow and the cidery there, and Titan Markets as well. And obviously, very busy area, becoming very well-loved by the citizens of not just Greater Belfont, but State College and all throughout Central PA. So it's been a tremendous project.
Yes, and the well-used 2.5 million in RACP dollars.
Yes. Yeah, Commissioner Concepcion?
Thank you for this. We understand how complex these projects are to make sure all the paperwork is turned in and finalized, and so, thank you. And yeah, what a great project.
Commissioner Durson? It's all great, thank you.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll move to approve Planning Items Three and Four.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Planning Items Three and Four. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And two more items from planning. We've got Chris Schnurr, who's been working very, very hard on a broad variety of development projects throughout the county.
Thank you and good morning. There are two memorandums of understanding that are being presented today. And before I get into those presentations, just a real quick reminder what the memorandum of understandings, or MOUs for short, are. There are, today's MOUs are a three-party agreement between the developer, the township, in this case, there's one with Potter Township, and one with Walker Township, and the county, whereby the developer agrees to reimburse Potter and Walker Township for the costs associated with the township engineers processing, reviewing, inspecting, and approving the engineering details of the plan. Now, the board isn't actually approving the plans itself, it's just the contract, so to speak, between the engineer and the municipality to make sure that the developer pays the engineering review costs. So that's, with that being said, the two MOUs today, the first one is called Shady Farm Lane Estates, and it's a subdivision in Walker Township. The proposal represents a preliminary submission showing a subdivision of 91 lots comprising 90 residential and one stormwater with corresponding infrastructure consisting of 24 acres. I'll go a little more detail. And then the second MOU is with TCBM Investments in Potter Township. That's a preliminary land development plan located in Potter Township. That's showing the development of eight self-storage buildings with corresponding infrastructure. And to show everyone what those, where those two MOUs and subdivisions developments are located, this is the Shady Lane Estates in Walker Township. And as you head toward the top of the screen, this is where the former Wyatt Zion used to be located. Now, it has been, it's been modified with a traffic signal at Zion Road and Cobblestone Road. And as you make your way toward Pleasant Gap, there used to be a road called Cemetery Lane that would connect Zion Road and State Route 64, but that has been vacated and abandoned. And what the developer is intending to do is subdivide this property of 24 acres into 91 residential lots. And as you can see on the screen, they're duplex lots. Now, the way it's going to work is there will be one duplex building, and the common party wall will be the lot line. So there will be a unit on one lot and a unit on another. And so there are 90, there are basically 45 buildings, but there are 90 units, individual units, on these tract of land. And this is where Cemetery Lane used to exist, but as part of the realignment of Zion Back Road, excuse me, Zion Road and 64, the township was required to vacate and abandon that part of Cemetery Lane. And then the second MOU that I mentioned is, it's what's called All Storage Solutions. That is, the developer's TCBM Investments. And this is located on the south side of 322, just east of the Number One Cycle Center, and it adjoins Scott's Landscaping, as well as Designer's Studio, and is located in front of the former Shaner Baseball Field Complex. What it's going to show is there's two lots being developed. One is Lot 3, coming off of Summer Lane, and then the other lot is going to be sharing the driveway called Designer's Drive with Designer Studio, and that's Lot 5, and it's going to access the storage units. The breakdown of the storage units are located there on that table. For the most part, what I'm circling is your standard storage unit with different sizes. Now, the 15 by 50 are earmarked for RV storage, with all the stormwater being directed to the areas that are highlighted in blue. And with that being said, those are the two MOUs that are being presented for today.
Great, well, good to see some, you know, sustained, steady development here in Center County, especially I was sort of wondering how you were going to be able to fit 90 lots on only 24 acres. But it sounds like a good plan and keep people's prices down, but you still essentially own a house.
Minimum lot size is only 5,000 square feet with public water and sewer in the Village Commercial District out there, so they're able to do that.
So that's tremendous. We're accommodating our slowly growing population, but in a dense way, so we're not paving over a lot of farms, which we certainly don't want to do. Commissioner Concepcion?
Thank you.
Mr. Durson?
That's good, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, then.
I'll move to add Planning Items Five and Six to next week's consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving Planning Items Five and Six to next week's consent agenda do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, now, Carrie from Criminal Justice Planning.
Good morning.
For a grant application. Morning.
Here before the board to request approval to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Intermediate Punishment Treatment Program funds for 2023, 2024. These funds support Center County's intermediate punishment programs, the DUI Treatment Court, and the Drug Court. Center County is eligible for up to $130,000. That's typically what the exact amount we apply for. Grant funds would begin July 1 of 2023 and run June 30 of 2024. These are state dollars, not federal, so it's contingent upon the state budget passing and the allotment of IP funds being secured. And most of the grant funds support a few partial salaries and benefits, and then most of it is for treatment services through drug and alcohol.
Great, thank you very much, Carrie. Appreciate that. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion? Commissioner Durson? Great.
I'll move to approve the grant application with Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Intermediate Punishment Treatment Program funds.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the grant application with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Intermediate Punishment Treatment Program funds do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right, now we've got Tracy from Records Management for Standard Contract.
Good morning. So I'm here to ask approval for the destruction of county records. That's from the following offices. These documents are due for destruction. It'd be Aging, Center County's Youth Center, Commissioner's Office, Conservation District, the Controller's Office, District Judge Lockman, Domestic Relations, Human Resources, Probation, Recorder Deeds, Risk Management, Transportation, and the Treasurer's Office. These records exceed Pennsylvania Historical Museum's guidelines for records retention. So their timeline's up, and I'm asking for approval to have them destroyed permanently.
Have all these departments signed off on the destruction of these records?
Yes, yes, yep. I have work orders with all the documents listed. They've approved them, signed them, have copies.
Sounds good. It's not like we're not already leasing an entire warehouse filled with our records.
So what we can get rid of is...
Yeah, well, as long as it's legal and that they've exceeded their guidelines, yeah, we don't need them anymore. Commissioner Concepcion, anything?
Any questions?
All right, why don't we take a motion, then?
I'll move to add destruction of county records, as outlined on the agenda, to next week's consent agenda.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the destruction of county records, moving it to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right, now, thanks again, Tracy. We'll move over to Chad for a cybersecurity contract.
Good morning. Today I have a contract renewal with CDWG for DUO security. DUO is, of course, the application we use for multi-factor authentication. Contract for one year is $21,420.
Not only does that enhance our cybersecurity, but I think we're reaching the point where it's kind of required by our insurance company.
For cybersecurity insurance, yeah, multi-factor authentication has been a requirement for the last couple of years.
Great, thanks, Chad. Any comments, Commissioner Concepcion?
Thanks for keeping us up to date.
Commissioner Durson? All right, we'll take a motion, then.
I'll move to add the contract with CDWG to provide DUO security. I'll move to add the contract with CDWG to provide Duo Security to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding the contract to provide Duo Security next week's consent agenda do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Chad. All right. We have a very small consent agenda. If we could have a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great. Now we'll move over to the check run with Commissioner Concepcion.
Okay. In today's check run, I'm going to just recognize one of the checks to an agency that's near and dear to my heart, Cent Clear Child Services. They provide early intervention services for the littlest members of our community and help ensure that they are ready for kindergarten. With that, I will move to approve the check run dated April 21, 2023.
All right. We have a motion to approve the check run of $2,251,868.62. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Do we have an administrator's report, John?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. We'll move on to the voter registration report from Commissioner Dershon.
All right. Today we have a voter registration report that indicates 99,818 voters from last report. From last report, it's up 13 members. So the highlight reel is 42,040 Democratic registrations, 132 Green Party, 606 Libertarian, 13,359 No affiliation, and 40,564 Republican voters. And when you add the 3,117 other voters in, you receive the total of 99,818. And the feature party, and this is for all you ghosts and goblins out there that are anxiously waiting for something to do in April, we're celebrating the Halloween party. The Halloween party in Center County has one registration, so I think they have openings for other folks if they're going to have a true party, so. All right. And then I'd also like to recognize precinct number eight, which is Milesburg Borough. They vote at the community center in Milesburg, and in the last election, there were total registration of 704 voters. 472 ballots were cast, which leads to a percentage voter turnout of 67.05%, which is not too bad. So I'd like to recognize the folks in Milesburg, and I'd also like to recognize there's a nonpartisan event that's going to occur tomorrow evening at the Fire Hall between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00, that they are going to be doing voter registration. So if you're not registered to vote in the Milesburg area, or anywhere for that matter, you can come to Milesburg and get signed up for voting. So there'll be a few folks down there, I'm sure, to help. So there you go. That's my report for this morning.
Great. Thanks, Steve. We'll move to announcements. The Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meetings on Thursday, May 4 have been canceled. The Department of Community and Economic Development will be doing a tour through downtown State College, and the Commissioners wanted to support our local businesses during that event. Also, the Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, May 16, has been canceled due to the municipal primary election. Do we have any executive sessions to report or hold, John?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right. We have the remainder of our public meeting schedule on the list here. We've got a Commissioners' Work Session on Tuesday, the 25th, at 11:00. And then on Thursday, we have our Finance Meeting at 9:00, Retirement Board at 10:00, and then there's a Board of Elections Meeting at 3:00. And then Tuesday, May 2, Board of Commissioners at 10:00, followed by a Board of Commissioners' Work Session at 1:00. Do we have any additional questions from the press?
John, the county land tied with the prison, the transfer, is that behind the prison, by McCrossan, or where exactly is that lot, too?
The property is, so Rutter's is on your right, the correctional facility, and then the adjoining Lot Two is the following lot.
Do you know how big a lot that is?
I don't have that information in front of me. I could get it for you if you like it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional questions from the press?
Do you have any update on the responsible worker ordinance that was discussed a few months ago?
That would be the responsible contractor ordinance, right, which would allow the Commissioners to turn down bidders that we felt weren't responsive, and has aspects to it for openness, transparency, and workforce training. Yes, that would be the work session we're holding on Tuesday, May 2 at 1:00 p.m. Yes. Additional questions? No? All right. We have a motion to adjourn then.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second at 10:55. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Thanks.